I'd like to call the Board of Trustees meeting to order, please. If you'd stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. All right, let's call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Present.
Trustee Gutt. Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Reiker.
Present.
Trustee Carter.
Present.
At this time, I would ask for a motion to appoint Sarah Whitbrock to take the minutes for the meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. We would be at approval of the Board of Trustees' minutes for Tuesday, June 19, 2018. I've asked for a motion to approve those minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from June 19.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I do. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, next, item five, executive session minutes for 10/17, 2017; 10/24, 2017; 11/7, 2017; 2/27, 2018; 3/27, 2018; 4/3, 2018; 4/17, 2018; 4/24, 2018; 5/1, 2018; and 6/5, 2018. I'd ask for a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. Yes, counsel, go ahead.
I was going to ask, did those were distributed at the last meeting, and I wasn't here, and I'm not sure if we had any discussion about them. I'd like some time to evaluate that, because whether we disclose or choose not...
Should we move to defer?
So I would like to defer that.
I would ask for a motion to defer, then if you draw your motion. Trustee Reiker?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to defer.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
I do have correspondence. I have a letter from Tom Horstman of 1106 East Hines. He says, "I want to extend a thank you to Sergeant Glenn Neal for his assistance this morning around 7:00 a.m. My son Brian locked his keys in his car this morning, both sets, and we were unable to retrieve them. I contacted the police department, and he was put in touch with Sergeant Neal after explaining my predicament. His response was, 'I'll be right over.' He arrived shortly thereafter, and in minutes, he had the car unlocked. We both thanked him for such immediate and courteous service. I thought a letter regarding this extraordinary police service should be known by a supervisor."
Okay, thanks to the police department and Sergeant Neal. Anything else?
That'll be all.
All right, I just have one announcement. We did have, we had 400 to 500 people at the last movie night. The next movie night will be Saturday, August 11th. The movie is Star Wars, and it's sponsored by the West Central Building and Construction Trades Council. All of the union construction trades will be sponsoring that. Okay, on the trustee's report, the first is economic and community development. Trustee Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Carter, police.
No, thank you. We don't have anything.
Building and property maintenance. Trustee Gutt.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Fire. Trustee Reiker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Public Works. Trustee Harn.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one thing. Starting Monday morning, July 23rd, there will be a traffic lane reduction on the westbound lanes of East Glen near Lyons Park. Public Works will be installing a water service line for a new drinking fountain at Lyons Park. They hope to have the lane of traffic back open by Wednesday or Thursday of next week. So that's all.
Thank you, Trustee Harn. Administration. Trustee Mariscal.
I don't have anything at this time, Mayor, unless you do. Administration, second.
Okay. Move right into comments from the audience. Public comment. You have five minutes. If you'd give your name and address, please, if you want. Yes, go right ahead, Mary.
Mary Bear, 5016 North Clarinet, Peoria Heights. Since we have no way of knowing what the actual motion will be on the ordinance pertaining to the $30 charge for our water bill, I'm just going to come right out and say I'm not in favor of it in any way, shape, or form. I don't begin to know the ins and outs of the village's budget, but what I do know is that we didn't get the $400,000 shortfall overnight. Do I think there is a shortfall? Yes, but I do not think the citizens who live here and pay taxes here should bear the brunt of that shortfall entirely. I spoke with Chief Sutton a week or so ago and talked about a couple of options, one being that we might possibly drop the recycling. I believe, Mayor, you said that was like $116,000 or something like that, and it's up in September. Now, if you go ahead and pass this ordinance, I mean, you know, that would, right there, would save $116,000. So that could be an option, instead of just across the board charging everybody another $30 fee.
That is correct. Mary, the Board could decide either to keep recycling or to do away with it, or to combine both.
Right, but they should look, they should think about that before we pass an ordinance for $30 to everybody. If there's a chance we can save $116,000, and it may not, and I understand that $30 may not cover the whole $100,000 shortfall, but maybe, maybe there doesn't have to be $30 across the board. And secondly, if the Board feels like they have to do that, then I think they should take care of our senior citizens that live here, especially the ones that are on the senior freeze and home city exemption. I don't know everybody's family that's on the Board, but I do know Brian, and Jeff, and Mayor Phelan. Your families spent thousands of hours in this village. And Deb and Cheryl's, their families lived here. Then we grew up here, they grew up here, and I don't think we're doing a service to our senior citizens and our family by putting, you know, that kind of hardship on there. I'm pretty sure, unfortunately, a lot of our parents aren't here, but I'm pretty sure if they were, it would create a hardship on them. I know it would of my parents. So somehow, you know, we need, somehow, we need to tighten our budget across, you know, our belts across the board. You know, the seniors that are here and the rest of us that have been living here in the village is what makes it unique. We're not Peoria, we're not Galena, we're never going to be. You know, we're Peoria Heights, and I think we need to look at that. And then, secondly, I'd like to know what happened to our village clerk.
Our village clerk resigned.
Do we have a, were you going to tell us that, or read her resignation, or?
There's a couple of items on the agenda tonight. Yes, Margaret resigned.
And that's one of them, her resignation?
She gave us her resignation several weeks ago.
I know, but is that on the agenda to read or not?
We're going to be addressing that later on tonight, yes.
To the public?
Yes.
Okay. Right. That's it?
Anyone else? Yes, come forward, please, give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Lisa Brown, and I live at 4922 Ogden. I've lived on Ogden for about 14 years, and I'm, I wanted to discuss the number of cars being stolen. I implore you to devote consistent police hours to finding criminals that keep stealing the cars. It's a major problem. I've often gone to the Peoria Heights Facebook, the police Facebook page to find out what is happening, and it doesn't have any pertinent information that I think the people of Peoria Heights would like to see, like including Crime Watch, the things that Peoria has. They have Crime Watch information, they include fundraisers, important ordinances, missing children, all crimes, to keep people informed. And I think if we do, all the neighborhoods can have the necessary information to maintain safety. And maybe a community relations officer can help bridge the gap between neighbors and crime problems to help reduce crime, because I didn't know the problem that was occurring on my street till I was walking my dog and talked to a few people. I have a lot of wonderful neighbors where I live, and I know that they would be more than happy to assist in anything regarding information. And so I was hoping that maybe we could devote some resources to more of the residential areas, less of the business district. Thank you.
You'll take that.
Sure. Well, first of all, I appreciate your input, and I'd be more than happy to meet with you, and I've...
That would be great.
I've got an open-door policy. You don't have to wait for a Board amendment, a meeting to speak or contact me, but I can talk to you after the meeting on some different areas. And the issues you're having in your area, I'm not going to get into all of them right now, but there are other than, as far as the stolen vehicles, those are, we are having a few here and there, but it's not an epidemic that we're seeing around us in Peoria. Now, what you are having in that area, I'll discuss after the meeting, but it's not stolen vehicles, which I've already had some discussion with some residents tonight about that. As far as your, as far as the crime stats and everything else, we are, we are linked into the same crime view that Peoria is. They, they put that in as well for us. If they're not putting in accurate information, I can address that with Peoria, but we've been a part of Crime View for years. But anyway, we could put that link on our website. It used to be on our website. I'm not sure why it isn't any longer, but we can address those things, and I can, you know, answer any other questions you might have as far as your neighborhood, but you are having some issues, stolen cars or not.
It was just weird that it was like my car, and then like two houses down. Like, it seems to be becoming a thing.
Well, I'm not, I don't want to get in, in a discussion on what issues you're having there on camera. I'll talk to you after the meeting and kind of let you know what we're doing about it. I don't want to televise that, so, all right? All right. Thank you for your input, though.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, just to echo what Chief Sutton said, please call Village Hall or call the police department if you have any issues at all. All right, yes, sir, please come forward.
Dave Bright, live on 5428 Glen Elm. I've been here for about 40 years, and I'm one of, 40 years, and I'm one of these seniors that Mayor was talking about for garbage fees. I talk with the chief about other ways of doing things, and I guess things are going forward to that. But if the village, I understand, I'm not privy to all the information, is over 60% rental property, and I bet 40% that's left is probably at least half senior citizen people. And like she was saying, you're putting a $30 tax on for garbage fees and stuff like that, it's a kind of expensive for a fixed-income person. If there was anything else that they could do to help get some revenue or whatever, it would be fine, that doesn't have anything to do with the main business district. The residential areas are falling apart from what I see on them. If they're not rental, all you got to do is drive down the street, and you can tell which ones are rental and which ones home-owned. But if there's anything they can do to help alleviate that problem, so like I say, it's not a, that big of a deal, because the only thing that don't seem to go up in the world is pensions. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for being here. Yes, welcome.
My name's Mark Bean, Vice President of Peoria Heights Suburban Lions Club, and I was just here to thank the neighbor of the Lyons Park, the apartment building behind. You allowed us to paint, full paint this brick wall, and I put a couple lion portraits up, and no cost to the city, or, and very great news that the water fountain is finally going to be installed next week. They were like three months late on delivery, so that was the main holdup, but that's all.
Thanks to the Lions for all you do. Okay, public comment still open?
No.
Going once, going twice, public comment's closed. On to old business. Any old business to come for the Board? Hearing none, we're going to go right into new business. The first, ordinance 2018-1556, an ordinance imposing a residential waste collection fee. Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1556, imposing a residential waste and collection fee.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Second. Okay, I have a second. Go ahead.
This would be what we've been talking about, where we would charge a fee of $10 a month for each residential unit in order to help our budget here at the Heights. I know we've talked about some other ways that we could possibly come up with the money to cover this. The actual cost of the garbage and the recycling is not anywhere near $10. It's, we're actually picking up more than half of what this cost is and charging $10 to each resident per month. I think at some point, and I don't know if this makes any difference to anybody or not, but I, I think it was something we had talked about, perhaps moving this to, to the tax bill, if it makes it easier than paying the $10 per month on a three-month bill where you're having to do $30 out of pocket. I think maybe we can get the attorney, ask the attorney also if, if it was in, in the tax bill for next year, would that help those elderly residents that are on a freeze? Would it still be imposed on there? Right now, this is not a tax. This is just a fee. But if we added it to the tax bill, then it would become part of...
It, it would be billed and collected as part of the tax bill, but because it's a fee, it would not be subject to the freeze.
Okay.
So the, the tax bill would just be a collection vehicle, and that's something that we should discuss, if that's something the Board is interested in, a senior waiver or discount of some sort, that would need to be billed into the ordinance. And the way that we collect that fee, whether we bill everybody monthly, or, you know, have a county collect it as part of the tax bill, isn't going to change the impact on seniors.
Okay, so right now, we're talking about probably two-month cycle here till the end of the year, so about $60 until we can get together and talk about how to do that, perhaps running it through, you know, your tax bills as opposed to on here. I guess another question I have, too, is if we did that, let's say someone was on a, in a rental property, and that was run through the taxes, then the owner of that property would be the one that would be responsible for that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, they could obviously turn around and impose it on the resident if they wanted to, but that, but they would be the ones responsible, correct?
Correct, and the owner is responsible under the way the ordinance is drafted, anyway. Now, as a landlord, if you want to pass that fee on to your tenant, that's your prerogative.
Okay.
Yeah, the owner is responsible for the water bill on rental properties.
Okay.
No different.
So...
Landlords' fees on to their tenant, but that's, that's not a matter for us to dictate. The landlords can choose to do that or not do that, but as property owner, landlord is ultimately responsible to the village for that fee.
Okay. And if we decide to drop the recycling, which I know a lot of people do like the recycling, but if we do, obviously, the, you know, if we did add it to the tax bill, then it would be changed at that time, too, but that's something to talk about down the road. This is just going to help with our budget for this year. As going into next year, I guess, you know, as a Board, we just have some decisions to make on which way to go for next year, if we're going to keep it this way, or if we'd have to, you know, if it would be easier to add it to a tax bill.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
I think that if, if we did opt to impose the, the tax, that there should be something for the senior citizens. I've said that all along, and I don't, I'm not changing my opinion about that. I also think that this bill should be switched to the property tax, and I think there should be a specific line item that says recycling and garbage. If we opt to get rid of recycling later, fine, for right now, I think we should keep it. If you don't put a specific line item on the property tax bill, and you just collect it as general corporate, it can be spent any way the Board sees fit, but if it's earmarked for a specific purpose, it has to go there.
Absolutely, I agree.
And honestly, that's what's happened about 20 years ago. There was some money in the property tax bill, and it was collected as general corporate. This is from Andrea Pendleton, who's gone now, God rest her soul, but it started out that way, and then it, it got, it got kind of soaked up, then we added recycling, and Andrea was pointing it out way back then, there's not really money coming in to cover that expense going out, and then it was never earmarked as garbage, so it would, it was easy to get rid of. And then we took the 5% that we were collecting, and we put it toward police pension, which was not being funded. So the money has all gone to responsible places, it's just the money going forward. I think we need to put a specific line item and collect it that way. And in that way, because, see, water rates won't just stay the same forever, and, I mean, they're going to go up, because things go up. That's just the nature of the world, so you don't want to get the water bill so far out of hand that you have no room to grow with it, so.
Yeah.
I know it's not good news, but it's just reality.
Thanks for that bit of history, Trustee Harn. That's important. And I, I thought at one time, many years ago, there was part of the revenue from property tax that went towards garbage, but I haven't seen anything designated for a long time for, for that, so.
Right. It was, it's all in how it's collected.
That occurred, do you have an idea when that occurred?
I would say it was at least 20 years ago. It would have been when Ray Pencil was mayor, Andrea was trustee way back then, and they put her over garbage, and, man, she did a great job with it, you know? And the other problem you ran into is the, the fees, that the, the landfill have gone up so much that the 5% that we're getting from the tax bill, it doesn't keep up with the tipping fees and the landwigg, and the, you know, the trucking and everything, so. Anyway, I mean, here we are. If you ever want to balance budget again, we have to do something, but I don't want to hurt the senior citizens either.
I just have one comment. I know the comments from the audience are over, but if you add it to the tax bill, and you have four or five empty lots, no garbage pickup, no water, you're going to get paid on every one of your tax bills for that. That's something I would get.
I think, I think we could probably work that out, couldn't we, Mike? Through the township?
Well, look, I really appreciate this dialogue, and I've got mixed emotions about what we're doing, but I really, if, whatever we do, I want to get it done right, so my concern is that we pass something, we don't know what we're passing, and that, you know, tried to, along with Mr. Sutton, Chief Sutton, have urged the Board to find a consensus and to decide what we want to do, so I, I'm very nervous passing something that we're kind of shooting from the hip tonight. Again, we need to do something, we really need to do something about our budget, so if this doesn't move forward tonight, we're going to have to do something on the expense side and make some cuts, because we have a budget that's not balanced. So, counsel, would you answer Trustee Harn's question?
I can. The ordinance very specifically applies only to property that has a residential housing unit on it, so it would not get billed to somebody that owns just a vacant lot. So if you have a vacant lot with a separate property tax ID number, collecting the fee, if that's the way we go, on the tax bill would not result in the fee being imposed on vacant lot owners.
So the tax bill itself indicates, I mean, it indicates somewhere on there that that's just a lot and not a house?
It does. Residential, unimproved, residential improved, they classify land. There's a whole longer list of classifications, but it would only apply to residential improved lots.
Okay, so I guess back to my motion, then, I would like to approve the $10 a month for each residential unit in order to defray the portions of the cost incurred by the village for the waste collection and disposal.
Well, this doesn't say until when. This is just open-ended.
Yeah, I thought the idea was to just get it through this year, and then put a tax bill next year. We were going to, that's why I was under, under the understanding that that's how it was going to be. It doesn't say that on here at all. It's just open-ended.
Well, can this be amended, to say that?
It, it absolutely can.
So we can amend this and say, we can vote on it, and we can amend it and say that we want it through the end of 2018?
Correct.
And then between now and then, we can have a discussion on where we want to go, starting in January?
I think that, yeah, to answer your question, you absolutely can do that, and if that's the pleasure of the Board, it's an easy fix to make.
Okay. I just think that we've talked so much about this, this garbage, and we've tried to throw out there other ideas on ways that we can come up with money to balance this budget, and, other than cutting personnel, and the lady that just spoke about having cars stolen in her area, and I know there's some other things going on, you know, we really can't afford to start cutting police officers, and we have a fire department that takes care of us, and we really can't afford to start cutting those people, and we're kind of running bare bones on our administration as well, so I don't know where we would cut there either. I, I just don't know. That's, those are really the two places that most of our money goes, is either to salaries or to garbage. Those are our two biggest expenses, and there's nothing, not enough of anything to cut that would make a difference in the budget. I don't, I mean, we've looked at everything, so unless somebody has another idea...
The fees are nominal. I mean, they're not, it's not like we're trying to impose a $50 fund.
No, I mean, we're way below what all of the other communities around us are being, are being charged for garbage and recycling. $10 is not anywhere near what they're paying.
Plus, if we do make special arrangements to take care of our senior citizens, and, I mean, I, you know, within reason, I mean, if, if you're doing fine, then you can help pay the bill, you know, and if people, it's the difference between someone getting a medication and not getting a medication, fine, hey, no problem. We can help with that.
Well, that's somewhere where I'm at, and I admire Trustee Mariscal for taking the unpopular position of bringing this to our attention. I, I would like to find some way to provide relief to those on fixed incomes and senior citizens. I really would like to do that. We're not that far out of balance. I think the village can be proud that we've got a good economy here, and we've got good things happening, so we've made some changes recently, we've made some cuts, but just a reminder to those in the audience that nearly all the property tax goes to fund the police pension, which was underfunded for many years, so the property tax goes almost entirely for the police pension.
Our portion of the property tax.
Yes, thank you.
Which is about 5%.
Are small.
Thank you. So then, about 70 cents of every dollar we spend goes towards personnel, and that would be in the police department and public works. So if we are unable to balance the budget, we would probably be looking at cuts in people, and that would be in police and public works. So I personally think Public Works is understaffed, and they do a great job with the amount of people they have, and the police department certainly is staffed where it needs to be, but we don't want to have, I don't want to reduce the police force at all, so that's the dilemma, and, but finding some common ground where we can all agree upon is, is the important thing, so. All right, so we still have this before us. Any further comments?
Well, the only way I'm voting for it, we got to put an end, an end date on this.
Which we just said we can...
I just want to put that, but make sure that hasn't been forgotten. I want to make sure there's an end date on it.
Well, then I think we need to amend it to make sure, so I would ask for an amendment, Trustee Gutt, to make sure we do what...
Okay. I make an amendment to make this for just the last two billing cycles.
Okay, do I have a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay, so, on the amendment, any discussion on the amendment? All right, so...
If you vote on that, or you, the seniors, the seniors, is it two a? If you vote on that, the way you just read it, the seniors, you're not doing anything to help out the senior freeze.
We want to add that to it.
We will.
Well, do you want to make sure?
I don't, I don't know what to do specifically for it. I think that would have to be in the...
It would have to be in another amendment.
Okay.
How many amendments can you make?
How should I word it? To help out those fixed... To help out those fixed.
So many different ways to do it. You can rely upon the county's determination for property taxes for those who qualify for senior frees. That's a property ownership determination that would apply and lend itself to this ordinance, which is based on property ownership. That would be one way to do it. I don't want to inject myself into the substance of this, but that's one way to do it, that those who qualify for the senior frees on their property tax bill, as long as they're a qualifying, you know, property owner, would either receive a discount, a full waiver, again, those are completely up to you guys.
So let me, the chair would entertain Trustee Gett or anyone else an amendment to either discount or exempt anyone on senior frees currently.
That works for me.
Well, I'm asking.
Discount.
We need a number then.
What?
I would, we need in the motion, a number, what we, what those people would pay.
Five?
Five?
Half?
Fifty, yeah.
Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, so if I understand the motion, the motion is to impose a fee for waste collection of $10 and exempt, or no, that would include a fee of $5 for anyone currently on a senior frees?
Correct.
Is that your motion, Trustee Gett?
Sounds good to me.
Does everyone understand the motion?
Are we going to, excuse me, are we going to address the issue of imposing this then on the next tax cycle or are we waiting for that, for a later meeting? Or do we need to address it now?
That was already on that, that was also part of the amendment.
What I said earlier.
It's not.
We gotta have an ending.
That was just an end date.
To clarify, my understanding is we have really an amendment that has two components to it. One, imposing sort of sunset, that this is for, you know, calendar year 2018 only and the senior frees component that those who qualify for senior frees on their tax bill would pay $5 a month instead of 10. Those are the amendments that I understand on the floor that haven't been voted, but have been made and seconded.
So Trustee Mariscal, you want to have addressed that about the tax bill before?
That could be a completely different ordinance, correct?
Especially if the sunset's at the end of the year.
Okay.
It's gonna require action to continue it anyway.
Right, so we're, this is just for two cycles then?
Correct.
Right.
That's all we're doing tonight.
Okay. That's my, that's my motion, my amendment.
And then it would.
If you're disqualified, don't get anything in, right? In other words, if you turn out on a tax freeze, you have to pay the whole amount.
For two cycles.
You're driving all the seniors out of the area and causing it to be a rental place like the apartments over there.
All right, does everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Yes. All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes 4 to 2. Okay, we'd be at ordinance 2018-1563 and ordinance correcting a Scrivener's error in the boundary map and legal description for the village of Peoria Heights Business Development District Number 1. Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1563.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
I do, go right ahead, Dan.
This ordinance and then the next one, I know we have to vote on them separately, but I'll talk about them in tandem. They're merely amendments to the business district boundary and the TIF District 1 boundary that would remove small portions of Lake Street and Northern Avenue from maps and legal descriptions. That is part of preparing a better BDD boundary map or discovered to be within the city of Peoria and are not in fact in Peoria Heights. Should we agree to make these amendments, it would not affect the BDD plan or the TIF plan, it would not affect any private property within those areas or the village's use of the BDD or TIF district, other than ensuring the village will not inadvertently spend TIF or BDD funds in the city of Peoria. So essentially, it's a housekeeping item.
Okay, any questions for Trustee Mariscal? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Next, ordinance 2018-1564 and ordinance providing for and approving the first amendment to the Peoria Heights TIF District 1 redevelopment project area plan and projects. Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1564.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, and you've explained this, so any questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, ordinance 2018-1565 and ordinance submitting Title IX of the Village Code of Peoria Heights, Illinois for the purpose of adding a new Chapter 5, providing for the regulation of and application for small wireless facilities. Trustee Diane Mariscal, I'd ask for motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1565.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay, go ahead.
From what I understand, or from what, how I understand this is that this would allow us the ability to have a say-so in where these antennas are placed and.
Right, to be clear, the reason for this ordinance is a new state statute that was adopted that grants all wireless carriers the right to locate on any pole in any right-of-way these antennas that are going to be effectively to roll out the 5G wireless technology. We cannot prohibit or prevent, you know, the statute gives them a right to do it. We can regulate to a degree and we can charge a fee for it. So from a budget perspective, depending on how many of these we get, and I think with the progression of time, we're gonna get a lot, it's, you know, certainly helpful to the budget. There's a deadline of this month, July 31st, if you're gonna impose fees, you gotta have your ordinance adopted. So that's why it's on the agenda tonight to get that part rolled out. The balance of the ordinance just more or less tracks the state statute as to what the municipality can do and how it can regulate. And again, it's, I hesitate to even say regulate because we can't prevent. So there's a, the next ordinance on the agenda is gonna get into some aesthetic requirements that we can put on and I can discuss that more when that's on the floor, but for this, it's just, we're tracking the state statute and imposing what the statute allows the municipality to impose by way of fees.
And is there an across-the-board amount on a fee?
There is, it's $650 to apply for an applicant, you have to file an application for a permit and so $650 is the application fee. Most carriers are gonna come into a town and look around and say, we want, you know, we're gonna install 75 of these, it's gonna be on every light pole, you know, or every stoplight, you know, through town and they'll give you the locations. If they do one application for multiple antennas, it's 350 per antenna.
And that comes to the village?
And that comes to the village. And then there's a $200 annual fee after the application. So we get most of the money upfront and then a recurring fee of $200 per device, antenna, we don't even know what form some of these things are gonna take as the technology progresses, but, so it is a revenue device primarily and then when we get to the second ordinance, I can explain some of the aesthetic issues.
Okay. What is this $1,000 fee though?
That one is if you're gonna put in a new pole. The application fee.
We wouldn't be responsible for.
Oh, no, 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 no. But they have a right to install new poles. If there is no existing, you know, pole in a location that they need, they demonstrate that, you know, we've got to set up something new here, it's on them, but they have a right to do it and it costs $1,000.
What's on somebody's property?
It's gotta be on right-of-way. Can't be on private property, gotta be on right-of-way.
Okay, anyone else? Thanks for that good explanation. If you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Okay, that passes. Next, ordinance 2018-1566 and ordinance submitting Title VIII, Chapter 1 of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of regulating the appearance of utility facilities. Trustee Diane Mariscal, I'd ask for motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay, go right ahead, Diane or counsel.
I'm gonna go ahead and let you keep going with this.
No, no, that makes sense. This is an amendment to our existing ordinance that regulates utility facilities and if you flip to the second page, the new part is, the underlying part, D, new section D, pretty self-explanatory, but in essence, because the wireless carriers have a right to put these antenna devices on every light pole, every street light, the stop signs on Prospect, unfortunately, what we're left with is the minimum thing we can do is regulate the appearance. So in other words, don't stick a bright shiny silver one on top of a brown wooden pole. You gotta blend it. So the gist of these new aesthetic requirements is blending, you know, especially in terms of, you know, the color, we want them to stand out as little as possible. They're gonna stand out, there's nothing you can do to stop that, but we want them to, you know, at least paint them, shield things, you know, with the equipment on the ground, we can require some form of, you know, shielding with landscaping and so forth. That's about all we can do. So we at least need to have something in place to do that.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, ordinance 2018-1567 and ordinance submitting Title VII, Chapter 2 of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of regulating parking of vehicles with a gross weight in excess of 10,000 pounds. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for motion to approve that?
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I'd rather talk about it before I make a motion to approve it.
We need the motion to get it on the floor, so.
Then I make a motion to defer it to departmental.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, ordinance 2018-1568 and ordinance creating office of deputy village clerk. Let me just explain what we're doing here, since we have a vacancy in the office of village clerk, since village clerk Margaret Goff has resigned, what we're really doing here tonight, Sarah has acted as deputy clerk for many years now in handling a lot of the documents and working with and for in part with the village clerk, so I'm gonna ask counsel to explain. He and I have talked about not only what we're gonna do here tonight, to appoint a deputy and then I will be taking, if you have anyone who's interested in this position, I'm asking for you to direct in my way to send a resume or call me or email me for their interest and I'll be happy to talk with everyone. I want to get this filled as quickly as possible and have a name back to you for your approval. But counsel, if you would explain this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Illinois Municipal Code has, you know, addresses all of the elective offices, so all of the board members are, you know, elected positions that are authorized by statute. The village clerk runs for election, as we all know. Statute also permits municipalities to create the office of deputy clerk, especially large municipalities, one, you know, elected person, you know, is insufficient to carry out all of that work. The Heights just hasn't done that in the past, but this recent resignation of Margaret, you know, just points out the need to have an actual deputy clerk. So it is an office, which means it's an appointed position. By statute, when there's an acting clerk, when the village clerk, when we don't have a vacancy in the elected position as we do now, the village clerk would appoint the deputy. In our situation now, it's gonna be up to the mayor to appoint, again, like any other officer position with the advice and consent of the board. But first, we need to create the position before we can appoint it.
So then, would you explain that the next, there will be, have to be an election for village clerk in the next, to fill the unexpired term?
Sure, sure. With respect to the vacant elected office of clerk, because Margaret Goff resigned in the first two years of her term, the next municipal election, which would be spring of 2019, that position is gonna be on the ballot, but it will not be for a full four-year term, it'll be for a partial, filling out the remaining two years of the original term, so that once we get to 2021, you'll have a new election for a full four-year term. So we will get that position to the county clerk to be on the ballot as an open vacant position and the mayor, between now and then, can appoint someone to serve in an interim position. But to serve in the interim position, you've gotta qualify to be elected as the village clerk, which does have a residency requirement and you'll notice in the ordinance that there is no residency requirement, which is common for deputy clerks.
And then, and then again, I will bring a name to the board for their approval as soon as we can get someone who shows interest and a name that we're confident in.
And then, before we vote on the ordinance, there's one phrase that was left out and I believe it's because I sent a draft of the ordinance out to the clerk. In Section 1, I don't know that this is necessary, but I feel like it's to clarify to everybody, the duties are gonna be the duties of the deputy clerk under the statute, which is basically all of the duties of the village clerk, but I feel like we need to add that phrase. So at the end of Section 1, where it now reads, there is hereby created the office of deputy village clerk, I think we need to add with duties as prescribed by statute. So I would ask that that be, it's really a Scrivener's error, so I don't know that it really requires a formal amendment, but if you want to do it as an amendment.
Okay. All right, so I would ask for a motion to appoint Sarah as deputy clerk?
I want to table this until we can.
Yeah.
We're first voting.
That's all right, thank you, yes.
But I have a.
Gotta have.
Yeah, go ahead, go first. Create a position. Is this gonna be, while Sarah's doing, while the deputy clerk is doing the work of the village clerk, we'll be paying her, of course, because she's, you know, it's a paid position. But when we get a village clerk, do we continue paying the deputy clerk?
There's no, there's no increase in pay other than what would be outside of her normal working hours, but you want to address how that's gonna work?
We're not creating another position to pay for her?
No, it's not another position.
Okay. The position as is, is she paying position?
She's already been, I mean, for years, preparing the agendas, she posts all the notices online, which, you know, I don't know how we got to that point, I thought the clerk all along should have been doing that, but she's been doing all of this anyway. We're really just calling her, you know, what she's already been doing to begin with for many years.
I always thought Matt did that. Sarah's been doing it? I didn't know.
As the board knows, whenever there was a vacancy and they weren't able to attend, you know, it was usually the administrator that would step in and take the minutes, you know, in recall roll. So this is just a deputy village clerk, she will step in when the village clerk isn't here and even, if she doesn't, if she doesn't have to do that, she's not compensated, but if she does have to do it, then of course she would be compensated, but it's not gonna be an increase just because she's received that title. I think that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, I mean, in two years, when we get a new elected official, will we still have another position on the payroll?
You know, that would be up in my mind to the village clerk if they want to have a deputy, if that person doesn't want a deputy, that's fine, but again.
But it's nice to have the backup, I mean, but I mean, we just, we're sitting here charging for everything we can think of, so I just didn't want to add another position.
No, 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 that's, thank you for pointing that out, no. Obviously, while she's here, she will either get comp time or she, you know, paid for it, but she's not getting additional pay, nor are we creating a position where she will receive additional compensation at all, so, but we're really calling her what she already is, she's been a deputy clerk for many years. Again, she puts the agendas, and I don't know how we got to this point, to me, it should be the village clerk, but Sarah emails Mark, she prepares the packet, she prepares... should be the village clerk, but Sarah emails Mark, she prepares the packet, she prepares the resolutions, she helps prepare the agenda, she posts everything online, she's our FOIA officer and has been way before I got here, so she really...
She does a great job, too, by the way.
Yes, so, I mean, really, we just, we need this legally, too, since we have a vacancy, that someone can do this.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, so, I guess we're back at, I'd ask for a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1568.
I approve, make a motion.
A motion by Trustee Gett?
Second.
Second by Trustee Harn?
And just for clarification, as corrected with the reference to the duties being as prescribed by statute, correct?
Is that part of your motion, Trustee Gett?
Yes.
And part of your second, Trustee Harn?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Now, discussion on the motion.
Do we have a timeline as far as when an interim village clerk will be appointed?
I'd like to have a name for you at the next meeting. Obviously, we need someone who's a resident, we need someone who's available four out of five Tuesday nights a month, or for every night we meet, and we have someone who obviously is very organized and can take good minutes, so that's, I'm just looking for someone who would be committed to being here on the meeting nights, able to work with Sarah and the rest of us, so if you have names, please send them my way. I've had a couple of people express interest, but wanna make sure they understand the commitment, so that's all I'm looking for. I hope to have this filled very soon.
And counsel, just a quick question for you. Is the mayor the final arbiter on this, as far as who gets appointed?
It's like any other, when there's a vacancy, it's like any other officer position, the mayor appoints, and the council has to approve, it's the advice and consent.
I thought you said that the village clerk appointed the deputy clerk. Did you not say that?
If there's, if there is a clerk that's acting, I mean, right now, that position is vacant.
Right.
So, it falls to the mayor, but once, once there's a...
Well, the ordinance says by the village president, though it doesn't say by the clerk.
Because we're creating a position in a...
So, we're gonna change it later?
Well, it's gonna be up to the village clerk ultimately, when we actually have somebody in the position, to decide if they want a deputy. And I think it would take action to, you know, you, once you create an officer position, the only way to remove that as a position would be another ordinance. So, yes, we would have to act again to remove this as a position and not just leave it as a vacant position.
See, I'm hoping to get a very active village clerk, and if they didn't want a deputy, then we would eliminate this position.
So, we would eliminate it?
So, is this just basically acting as a safeguard measure?
It really is.
We have to do that by ordinance, then? To eliminate it?
Yes.
I mean, if we wouldn't do this, that would make you a little bit nervous legally, that we...
Just about every legal document, including ordinances, require execution by the village clerk or a deputy. If we have neither, there's a question as to whether we've taken any action on anything. So, it really is important.
Okay, so, I do have questions going through my mind. Okay, so, let's say we vote, we pass this through, the deputy village clerk, she does her role, we pay her, or obviously, she's gonna be working overtime, so we're gonna pay her time and a half for the time that she's here. That's the legal...
That's probably not, that may occur, but that's probably not, probably gonna be comp time. Trustee Harn?
Well, that's something that we have to discuss, then. I mean, that's, because what I'm hearing...
She works for the administrator.
...was that we're gonna compensate her, which I agree totally, she needs to be compensated. Whoever does these minutes need to be compensated, because the board, we've had tons of them this year. So, what I'm getting at is, not to pick on Sarah, but Sarah gets the position, she's gonna get paid time and a half, what's the difference if we, if we do that, or maybe it's better if we do give her whatever the clerk would've gotten? Maybe that's cheaper, you know, not, I don't mean that in a bad way, Sarah, but I'm just trying to look for a little, I'm trying to look for every penny we can find right now.
I'm gonna let Dustin answer that, but she's, whether you create the officer or not, it's probably, the board's gonna fall on her regardless, and she's probably gonna be here taking the minutes anyway, so, but it's probably, we're hoping, it may be time and a half occasionally, but most likely, it's gonna be comp time, she's working nights.
Would you explain comp time? I mean, I've been different places, and comp time means different things at different places, so...
Well, I see she would get that time off, I think, well, the term that we use is PTO, we go back into her PTO, so... But, I do think that time and a half would be cheaper than the stipend the village clerk received, if I'm, I don't really know what that amount is, but I'm pretty sure that it would be cheaper to go comp time or time and a half, but I'm not really sure what...
The clerk gets more than, than the board members, too.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, it's gonna be, it would be more expensive to pay her that than it would to give her some time off or...
And also, long-term, she'd receive that stipend, no matter if she was showing up to the meeting or not, I mean, so, I mean, I think that the time and a half or the comp time would be a cheaper route.
These are the questions that I'm asking. Okay, so now, when we do get a village clerk, and Sarah's been doing the deputy village clerk all along, when we get the village clerk, who's gonna do it? Is it gonna go back to Sarah? Or is the village clerk, we're gonna make the village clerk do what they're supposed to do? I'm just asking, a question.
The elected position, the elected office, responsibility is to keep the records, keep the minutes, and attend the meetings, okay? There are many, many duties that are consistent with that, day-to-day duties, that no elected clerk in a town this size is ever gonna do unless they're an employee, or you make the stipends sufficient, or you wind up with a, and this happens, you wind up with a municipality where no one will ever run for clerk. I'm not gonna have a full-time job where I make $500 a month, I just, nobody can afford to do it. So, what happens is, you have an elected clerk that attends meetings, gets that stipend, and then you have an employee that handles all the day-to-day stuff. And that's what the mayor was getting at when he said Sarah is our de facto deputy clerk and has been for years. We just don't call her that. She does what the statute describes as the deputy clerk position. We just don't have the office.
Typically, that person would typically keep that title, then, because she's actually gonna be doing that.
Well, we could...
I'm just trying to figure out where are we going after this? After we approve this, where are we going? How, is it a long-term, you know what I mean? These are all the things that we need to think about, instead of just Friday, not Friday afternoon, we get this and we have no idea or no clue what is going on here.
Sure. It came up because who signs the ordinance where it says clerk?
Right.
And there's no, it's not a valid ordinance until it's when a tested by the clerk. So, that's, that's the immediate need. The only way to satisfy that need is to create the position and appoint somebody to fill it. Now, long-term, that's a different question, and much like we put a sunset provision on the garbage fee ordinance, we could easily put a sunset provision on this ordinance.
I think that's what we need to do.
Okay.
It could be till a village clerk is appointed?
Yes, absolutely.
That would be an amendment that we would make, that, you know, much like the other amendments.
And not knowing who the next village clerk may be and how involved they want to be, I mean, Trustee Harn gave us a piece of history tonight, and, I mean, I recall many years ago, the village clerks being really involved and being present down in the office downstairs and very, putting in a lot of hours here, and I'm not faulting anyone who has been village clerk recently, but Sarah, everything that, all the documents that you would see Margaret and I sign after the meeting were prepared by Sarah, all of those documents, and they're filed and they're sent out the next day by Sarah, so I'm okay with just, the deputy clerk until another clerk is appointed, whatever y'all wanna do, but I'm following the advice of counsel to say, and we really need someone legally to have, to be able to sign documents, co-sign.
Because we need to get that ordinance signed, that one for the towers, we need to have that signed by the board first.
Yeah.
So, I would make a motion that we amend this to say until a village clerk is appointed.
So, do I have a second to the amendment?
I got another question, Mayor.
So, just a hypothetical, counsel, should the board approve Sarah becoming the deputy village clerk? Will she be able to sign these documents effective immediately?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Unless you had any other...
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, so, on the motion as amended to create this position until a new village clerk is appointed...
I wanna make a clarification. I think procedurally, and this is gonna cause us to have to go back and revisit something we did earlier tonight, but I think we need to vote on the motion to amend, and then separately vote on the ordinance as amended, and, so I think we're gonna have to take one more step to adopt the garbage fee ordinance, but for this, let's, I think we need to have a vote on the amendment to have, the ordinance is effective until a village clerk has been appointed.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, call the motion on the amendment.
Okay, Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Doug Riker?
Aye.
And Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, so the amendment passes back to the main motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll on that, as amended.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Trustee Carter, and counsel for getting us through that, and good questions. Okay, so next would be the approval of appointment of Sarah Whitrock as deputy village clerk. I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I motion my Trustee Gett, do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
And then, Your Honor, I do think we need to go back and call for a vote, the main motion to approve ordinance 2018-1556, to approve the garbage fee.
Don't we need to do all of them? Because she wasn't the deputy clerk when we approved it.
She, as long as she's deputy clerk, when she attests that the ordinance was adopted, we're okay.
Why are we doing the other one, then?
Because I lost track of what was going on through the discussion.
We need to go through the amendment.
We voted on an amendment to that ordinance to approve the senior freeze, reduction in the fee, and the sunset at the end of the year, and then, once that amendment was adopted, we needed to go back and vote on the main motion as amended, and I just lost sight of that, and I apologize.
You want us to do that now, then? You want us to do that now?
I think you should do that now.
All right, so the maker of the motion, Trustee Diane Mariscalda, ask for a motion to do that?
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the amendment to ordinance 2018-1556.
You would, the motion would be to approve the ordinance as amended.
Okay, to approve the ordinance as amended.
Correct.
Second.
And I have the second. Does everyone understand what we're doing? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
All right, and that passes again, four to two. Okay, next is request for approval for purchase of safety shoring equipment in the amount of $4,438. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for a motion to approve?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Phelan. I make a motion, we approve purchasing safety shoring equipment.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Okay, go ahead, Trustee Harn.
Okay, this is an aluminum trench box. It has a set of four spreaders 30 inches long, a set of four spreader adjusters. The total on this is $4,438, and it's used when the guys are digging for like a water break, you drop the trench box down in the hole, and it keeps the site from collapsing, and on the workers, we, I can't believe we haven't had one until now, so make a motion.
We have one, it's just old, it's...
I've never seen you guys use it.
Okay, questions for Trustee Harn?
Yeah.
All right. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next is request for approval for claw valve, pressure-reducing valve, in the amount of $13,167. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for a motion to approve that?
Make a motion, we approve the, I think, is it claw or clay?
Clay.
Clay valve. It's a pressure-reducing valve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Uh, another pressure-reducing valve was discovered, and it needs to be rebuilt and, well, some of it rebuilt, some of it replaced. The total with the parts and labor is, make a motion, we approve $13,167 to replace this.
I think we already have the motion.
No.
So, any question for Trustee Harn?
Was this the one we talked about that was down off Glina Road that you told us about? Okay.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, a request for donation in the amount of $500 to the SUN Foundation. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the donation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Harn.
Uh, this is a donation to the SUN Foundation. They teach people about rainwater and how water evaporates and comes back down, and it, it's educational for teaching people the importance of keeping clean drinking water. So, I make a motion, we approve the $500 to this SUN Foundation.
Okay. Any questions for Trustee Harn? Discussion on the motion?
Where are we at? Do we know on what we've got left for, in our donation?
I think this does it.
This is actually, it's really budgeted.
Stephanie, we take the mic, please, so everybody at home can hear you.
I just wanted to let the trustees know that this money is actually typically budgeted separately from that $3,000 that the board had for donations, so this will not affect that line item at all.
Oh, okay.
What is the current number? We're getting close to exhausting that line.
The donations, I believe we've made three, but it might've been four, I'll have to check. I think three.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Okay, anyone else?
I think it's four.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscalda?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, request for approval for use of Tower Park for Tower Park Music Fest on Saturday, August 4th. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for motion to approve that.
I make a motion to use the Tower Park.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Okay, go ahead, trustee Carter.
Okay, so this year, the music fest, we have dropped it down to one day instead of two days. So I make a, I'd like to vote on the approval of the Tower Park for August 4th. And it'll be, I would say, an all-day just to set up, and it'll be over with probably by 11 o'clock, 11:30.
Questions for trustee Carter? Thank you, Cheryl, for doing all the work on this. Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, next is a request for payment to bands for the Tower Park Music Fest. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for motion to approve that.
I make a motion for the bands.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Okay, so us cutting it down to one night, one day, I should say, and actually, Saturday, we usually have four bands, sometimes five, depending on when we start. We've cut it down to only three bands. So the bands are, they will start at 5:00, 5:00 to 6:30, we'll have the Three Mile High with Rusty Hall. 7:00 to 8:30, we'll have the Cusack Brothers, and 9:00 to 10:30, the Revere Few with Nick. So the total of the bands is $3,600.
Okay, questions for trustee Carter? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
You're saying this is for all of the bands, not just per single band? Because I just see here, it says quantity, in the estimate, it's got quantity as one.
Yeah, there's three bands totaling $3,600.
Okay.
It's like on the back of that foundation, mine is anyways.
Okay.
Sun Foundation.
Do you have it?
See, it's right. It's on the back, it's on the back of the Sun Foundation donations.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll take your word for it, trustee Carter. Sorry about that, guys.
There's three bands totaling $3,600.
Okay, I see it now. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hi.
Okay.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
There it is.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Next, request for payments to Purya Rentals in the amount of $1,301.90 for tables for the Tower Park Music Fest. Trustee Carter?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Any...
Okay, so this is for the tents that we have, the tables and the chairs, we work from them. And water barrels, I guess, to block off the tents.
Okay.
Is that right, Sarah? I'm sorry, help me out here.
Yeah, water barrels, tents, tables.
Okay.
Chairs.
Something that we do every year, because it's only for one night.
Okay, questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, request for payments to Advanced Audio in the amount of $3,750 for Tower Park Music Fest. Trustee Carter?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Mine first.
I do.
Sorry.
Any comment, trustee Carter, on this?
Okay, yeah. This, I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that Advanced Audio has been doing this, I think this is our 10th year doing this, by the way. And they, they do a wonderful job. But they don't only do the sound, they also bring the generators that we need and that stuff, too. So for one night, they're charging us $3,750, so I would like to...
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Next, discussion and recommendation regarding existing waste collection and recycling contracts. So I'd ask either trustee Mariscal or Chief Sutton to start the discussion.
Okay, yeah, we would like those to off the bid for, to try to get them on the same line item. I think one expires, what, in August, and one in December?
Correct. January.
In January. And are we going to try to get those all with the same company? Is there, or get two separate companies and do it as one line item, or?
I think you're going to want to go with, you're going to have to have two companies. I don't think you're going to have one company do both. I mean, because that's probably going to drive the rates up more, so.
I would say whatever's cheapest. Go look both ways. I mean, what do we get if we write one check or two? I mean, whatever's the best...
Even though PDC will probably not going to like their service, but it still needs to go out there. It needs to, we need to get bids. We need to make sure that GNO is on track with their fees. We get wonderful service from GNO. I mean, they pick up anything, the recycling. I think we need to go out for a full bid.
Sure, that's fine. I mean, we've gone off for bids before, and GNO's blown them out of the water.
This much for recycling.
Hey, I don't have a problem with doing that, you know?
Absolutely. You've got to...
Eagle, and it's so separate.
I don't know how GNO does it.
The question is, that I'm wondering, though, is if you break that out like that, will the recycling require that all of the citizens have recycling? Or do they have to have a certain amount of people doing recycling? Or how does, I mean, how does that work? I mean, so you could charge somebody who doesn't necessarily...
We can craft it, I think, any way we choose.
We can. It's not cost-effective to have people opt in or opt out. I mean, you...
So you lump it all whether you do it or...
Right now, people don't have to take recycling if they don't want to.
Right. I see.
But it's, we still pay for them, though, right?
You're going to pay the fee, right?
We still pay for them whether they recycle or they don't, just like somebody's going to pay for recycling whether they do or don't.
But I thought we were talking about on the tax bill, breaking it out.
Breaking it down.
Say, we don't have two separate costs for it. Say we go with PDC, who does both, we need it broken out.
Is that what works?
That's, I'm sure that a provider who provides both services would bill separately, would itemize the bill, garbage collection, recycle collection.
That's what I'm asking.
But I understood the question to be, do we want to solicit bids for combined? One carrier doing both, garbage collection and recycle? And as I heard, trustee Carter, it's whatever.
I don't think GNO recyc, does recycle.
No, they don't.
But it would be interesting to see what we come up with price-wise. So I say that just get the bids, it doesn't cost anything.
So GNO plus Eagle is cheaper than PDC.
Right, yeah, get the, just get the bids, however people want to bid, collect them. I mean, if Eagle wants to bid, then...
Garbage and recycle, and what, all up for bid?
Yeah, because GNO's bound us Eagle, and, I mean, Eagle's got a drive from Galva, and we, like I said, we've done these, gone for bids before, and GNO and Eagle was blowing the other competition out. And I look at that, I'm like, if they want, if the other companies are charging this much, how are they getting away with it? How are they doing this for less?
Okay. So have we really been out for bid, or were we just told that?
No, we all came to a meeting, remember, we had the meeting, they came in with their bids, and that's...
Yeah, we've seen bids, garbage before. Oh, yeah.
They came in with a presentation, but I'm not sure if they actually bid it. I mean, that was a while ago, but, yeah.
It's been, there were three or four companies that bid.
The only reason I say that is because I did meet with PD, they wanted to meet with me, and I met with PDC, and they were, of course, explaining the service they offer, but they commented that they've never bid it. They were wanting to bid it, but it never got bid, so...
No, they've bid.
No, they went out. We had a bid.
I say, don't put the restriction on, you have to bid both. Just say, you can bid one or the other, or both. You want to give us a better deal on both? Great. However, you want to be the most competitive for our work.
We can, and I think that it does make sense to ask people to submit, that, you know, you need to submit a recycle cost and a garbage cost, and you can do one or the other, or both, as long as you don't give us one lump sum for both recycle and garbage, so we can't compare.
So doesn't PDC make people buy a receptacle, though?
Yeah, one, yes.
Well, we need to take that into consideration.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be in the, it should be in the bid.
Because Eagle, right now, supplies for... The second one they charge, from my understanding, that's what they use in...
I was reading on their website, too. I think they give you one certain size, and if you want a larger one...
Two fifty.
Yeah, and you can pay.
Rent it?
Yes, two fifty.
For the second one.
It's an ongoing charge.
Yeah, the first one's free, the second one's two fifty a month. And that's the thing with the ones we got now, Eagle, I have two of them, I don't pay for them. And I, I mean, we fill them both up. So, I mean, it's not my, I used to, before recycling, I would have four or five garbage cans every week. We do recycling every other week now, and I have two garbage cans at the most.
Well, we can write the RFP however we choose. So I think what we need to do, we'll have Chief Sutton work with Mark, and we'll bring you more information at the next departmental meeting.
Yes.
Well, because a lot of people, they got to pay a rental fee for their container, they're not going to, they're not going to recycle. And it kind of defeats the purpose of having recycling.
Okay. So please pass on your additional comments to Dustin before the next meeting. Next is request for approval for the use of Village Hall on Sunday, September 16th, for an open house in the Heights. Trustee Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I'd like to make a motion to approve use of Village Hall for Sunday, September 16th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Julie, this is your event, would you mind coming forward and telling us all about this, please? It's really exciting what you're doing here.
Well, I'm Julie Beaufort, 4737 North Grammy Drive, and I presented an idea to the chamber, to the village, that this would be an event that hopefully would serve the Heights really well. And it's basically, when open houses happen, it's on Sunday, like Sunday 2 to 4. And realtors, you know, host the open house of their listings. And I thought, well, why don't we make it where it's come see us? Like, we're the Heights, and I'd love to bring in more families to the Heights. And so I would like to help bring this event forward, that would be September 16th, 2 to 4. And hopefully, every house that's listed for sale in the Heights would have an open house. And this isn't exclusive to any agent or any brokerage, it's anybody that has a listing. I'd also like to include anybody else that wants to do it, it could be for sale by owners. And my hope in asking for the Village Hall to be open is basically to use it as an information center, so people can start here. They could pick up a map, they could go out and see the homes, they could, we could do very supportive, another idea, I was talking with all three of the Heights banks, and if they'd like to be present, and they'd like to have a booth and answer questions, first-time homeowners, what's preapproval, what's, you know, and just build it to whatever we can. I'd have to say, September 16th, we'll be here before we know it. And I'd like to do as much as we can between now and then, and have it go forward, but start here and have this be the center. I'd also like to possibly draw people back, incentives for agents holding the open houses to have them come back here. So, you know, we have an audience to talk to our banks, or to whoever would like to be here and have a booth, maybe free rides in the tower, just anything that they can take a look at us, and on top of it, stay, have lunch, have dinner, shop, so anything that can build.
Thank you. Any questions for Julie?
Yeah.
Really excited. I know you're working hard to sell more homes in Purya Heights and bring more people back here as homeowners, so I appreciate all your work on that.
What's the program that we have available? Isn't it, if you purchase a three-bedroom, two-bath, isn't there some kind of a grant or something available?
The Home of the Heights.
Home of the Heights. So maybe have somebody there to discuss that? Is there somebody that's knowledgeable? Do the banks know about that?
They do. It's not as well-known as I would like it to be, but the banks are aware of that, and we'll try, we'll have some information ready to pass out that day on that.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this motion?
No, sounds good.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Finally, request for approval for the payment to R.A. Cullinan in the amount of $1,912.20 for chip seal and fog coat test section on Prospect. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for motion to approve that.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I'll only do it once this time. Make a motion, we approve Cullinan, to pay Cullinan $1,912.20 to do a test chip seal.
Okay, uh, you got a second? Go ahead, trustee Harn.
Okay. This work will be performed on Prospect Road. The, this proposal is based on performing the work with the existing area. UCM will perform chip seal work as normal.